Yes.
Bethel.
It's about to be.
Bethel.
There we go.
Oh, just started.
Okay, she's coming.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, April the 14th, 2025, and it is 3:30. Ms. Anna, can you establish quorum, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Norrie Garza.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach.
Present.
Councilwoman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay. Next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, as we gather during this sacred week of Easter, we pause to reflect on the spirit of renewal, hope, and unity that this season brings. We give thanks for the opportunity to serve our community. Guide our hearts and minds during this meeting. Bless our city, its leaders, its residents, and all who seek hope in these days. May we carry forward the light of this season in all that we do. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is the disclosure of conflicts. Ms. Anna, is anything filed?
Yes, ma'am. From Mayor Pro Tem Plata, we've got the items related to Cimarron. One is in executive session and one is in consent agenda.
Okay.
And number eight, the proclamation for the United Way, since I'm on the board.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay. All righty, the next item, we're going to move on to the presentations. And the first one is the January Employee of the Month.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today, we are presenting to you our Employee of the Month for January and February. We start with January, which is Ms. Emelda Cantu. She's our office coordinator for MADC. She was nominated by Ms. Kathy Hernandez, facility manager. I'd like to ask Ms. Cantu and Mr. Declo to please join me up here. The light's on. Can you guys hear me okay? No, maybe it's not.
We can't hear this noise, no, I mean.
Test, test. Hello? Good afternoon. I'm going to try to speak loudly so you guys can hear me. The nomination reads as follows. "Emelda consistently demonstrates a can-do approach even when faced with last-minute changes or unexpected challenges. Her ability to adapt and deliver outstanding service under pressure sets her apart as a valuable asset to our team. Emelda's friendly and approachable demeanor is evident in all her interactions with clients and colleagues alike. She fosters an environment of warmth and professionalism, ensuring that everyone she encounters feels valued and respected. Beyond her assigned responsibilities, Emelda is always willing to lend a helping hand. She steps in to cover the front desk reception area and book reservations whenever needed to ensure we continue with smooth operations and excellent service. Emelda's work ethic, adaptability, and positive energy make her an invaluable member of our team. We thank you, Emelda, for all you do. We appreciate you and the outstanding service you provide. Congratulations."
Congratulations. Well, Leonard, Declo, you want to say anything else, or Emelda?
Yes, we told Emelda that she has three minutes to speak about her award. And she didn't like that. Look, the thing about giving these awards to people who don't think about these awards and really work hard and focus on their jobs, that they're always surprised or wonder why they got them because they're so focused on their tasks and how to be helpful. So, we know Emelda's that way. She's humble, but she's a really integral part of the team. And we couldn't do what we do without her at the Mission EDC. So, I want to thank Emelda for all her efforts and everything she's done for us and continues to do for us. And we're happy you're a part of the team. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emelda? I just want to say thank you to my coworkers. It's always a pleasure working with such a fabulous team, so thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you know what? It's easier to, y'all come up.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Am I in the middle? You're carrying the tagline.
Beautiful. Two, five, you ready? Come on. One more. Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Three, two, one, and three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the February Employee of the Month.
Yes, mayor, our Employee of the Month for February is Ms. Kiara Islas. She's an administrative coordinator for our police department, and she was nominated by Assistant Chief Ted Rodriguez. I'd like to ask them to please join us up here. Join me up here. The nomination reads as follows. "Kiara has been a team player from day one. She has been open to taking on different roles and responsibilities and demonstrates teamwork on a daily basis. Recently, Kiara assisted us with our internal audit where she worked alongside administration in keying in the required information. Additionally, she assisted investigations in developing a spreadsheet to enter and view case information. This spreadsheet will be used for case management. She has also assisted us with our current grant process by collecting needed information and reporting. We appreciate the teamwork she provides to the different divisions within our police department. Thank you, Kiara, for all you do. Your teamwork and friendly attitude has made a difference in our department. Congratulations."
Okay. Anybody want to come up and say a few words? Kiara or Chief? Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, Kiara, for what you do with us. She's been amazing. She's been with us for a very short time, although in that short time, she's been able to adapt to everything we do there. She got there and she was able to work with not just our administration, but with different departments, with our grants department, and, you know, she never says no to anything. She takes on the challenges. Her technical savvy is great, so we're blessed to have her there as part of our team. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do every day. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the nomination, and I hope to continue bringing a good work to the City of Mission.
Thank you. All right.
Congratulations.
Chief, you want to be over here?
Yes, we need a, we need a chief right here.
You ready?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, next item is a proclamation. City of Mission Firebase EMS First Anniversary. I don't think it's working.
Is it working? Okay. Good afternoon, mayor, city council. Today, I come before you to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Mission recognizes the importance of providing high-quality emergency medical services to protect the health and safety of our residents, and whereas on April 11th, 2024, the City of Mission proudly launched a Firebase EMS program to enhance responsibilities and capabilities to ensure rapid, professional, and life-saving care to those in need. And whereas, over the past year, our dedicated firefighter, paramedics, and emergency medical technicians have responded to countless emergencies, demonstrating extraordinary skill, dedication, and compassion in the service to this community, and has expanded to a highly skilled team of 25 paramedics, eight advanced EMTs, and 33 EMTs, providing critical emergency medical services to those in need. And whereas, the department has demonstrated exceptional service and professionalism, responding to over 6,637 medical emergencies, saving countless lives and achieving 20 cases of return spontaneous circulation, ROSC, in cardiac arrest patients. And whereas, the City of Mission Firebase EMS continues to enhance its capabilities with a fleet of four ICU-level ambulances, two additional ambulances on the way, and specialized all-terrain unit to reach patients in challenging environments. And whereas, the residents of the City of Mission have benefited immensely from this enhanced emergency medical services and remain committed to furthering advancements in public health and safety. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the City of Mission, do hereby recognize the first anniversary of this vital program and encourage all residents to express their gratitude to the courageous men and women who serve our community as firefighter, paramedics, and EMTs proclaimed on this 14th day of April, 2025. And with that, mayor, I do have my staff behind me. I have our medical director here. He would like to have a few words to say to the council.
Okay.
As you know, how, what an advocate he's been. But I do want to express my sincere gratitude to this mayor, council, and city manager for the support and the community's support throughout this one year that we have done this EMS service. Because at the end of the day, the real heartbeat of the city is behind you right now. They are saving lives each and every day, and we're very proud to the staff that we have. And not, there's nothing more than the satisfaction that we have as being their advocate here on city council to make sure that they have the right equipment, the right staff, to provide that kind of service. And with that, I thank you very much for this opportunity to lead them in this direction. And with that, I believe our medical director has something to say.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I know you can see me over the podium this time. We're closer. Today, we're here to celebrate a milestone, a milestone of one year. Usually, when you celebrate milestones in corporations or in groups, it's about team building, about engaging, recognizing people that have done well, understanding what the process has been, and this is no exception. Our recognition that we're doing today for this amazing milestone, and besides the usual team building and love and passion that we bring to our group, it's also to thank you all, the decision-makers. We are merely professionals that recommend pathways and recommend methods of moving forward. But the courage that those people that represent our community that were elected has really resulted in good outcomes, excellent results. Just a year ago today, when we came full course, there were so many people that doubted if we were going to make it. You know, there were so many people from other municipalities that had not been as successful as we are today. Here we are a year later. Not only are we celebrating that we made it, we're also celebrating that we're an example. We're the jewel of the River Valley of what happens when people come together to serve their community. When I first moved here to Mission as a professional in 1988, and I started working at Mission Hospital as an emergency room doctor, you had to live in Mission. If you didn't live in Mission, you couldn't have privileges at Mission Hospital. That was, what, 40 years ago, something like that? And so, we went from a time where everyone carried their bags to work to a time where medicine, as you know, is corporate. And so, everything in our medical fields have gone to corporate. It's rare that we talk about how we help each other. It's common that we talk about lines of services and profit margins. It's really quite frustrating for those of us that have been at it for a long, long time. I'm happy to tell you all that what you've been able to do with this program is you're moving back to the way, I believe, that you get the best results, and that is having neighbors taking care of neighbors. I unfortunately went to a very sad funeral that I saw some of you there a couple of days ago, a young man who left us. I was amazed how almost everyone there was from this community, how everyone was uplifting each other, and once again, neighbors helping neighbors, going to the local HEB, going to the local Walmart, obviously, our neighbors helping neighbors. And when is it more important to see that familiar face, people in our community that are taking care of you at the most dire times, and they're doing it in a very professional manner? This organization has not only been incredibly successful financially, I'll say it again for you, Mike, financially, but equally important humanly. We work with the police department. We work with our volunteers. We work with our people in the community, with our doctors, with our firefighters. We teach people. We train people. We've been able to establish programs that we were not even considering a year ago. We have a participation in educating the new paramedics. We have programs to help our workload. And when you see that Mission Fire shows up, the 14 hospitals in the community, you see the truck out there, you see how sharp these guys are in their Class A's, how professional they are, and the work that they have, it's truly something to be marveled about. Most of y'all don't do this. I see this every single day. And so, when you guys show up, you're not even aware that, you know, there go the guys with the yellow patch. So, you guys have an incredible reputation in the community. I'm very proud to represent you, and I'm very humbled, and I'm very grateful that you all have taken the courage and you stood behind these guys who are there to pick up our parents, to pick ourselves and our children in that critical moment. So, on behalf of us, on behalf of y'all, I want to congratulate you on this incredible milestone this first year, knowing that it's only going to get better in the future. So, thank you once again.
Thank you.
I'd like to have my staff come up here and take a picture with you.
We actually have to take a vote, too. So, is there a motion?
I make a motion, mayor, to approve.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second to accept. The proclamation is read. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Good catch.
The next item is a proclamation for Telecommunicators Week. It's Chief Torres and Chief Silva.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chief Torres, Mission Police Department. And we have Mike Seale of Fire Chief here. We also have telecommunicators from both Fire and Police Department. And this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for police officers, firefighters, and emergency services personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, at this time, we encourage all our citizens of Mission to extend their appreciation for public safety telecommunicators. Their diligent efforts ensure that help is on the way when our citizens need it the most. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, declare the week of April 13 through April 19, 2025, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens, our city residents safe, proclaim on the 14th day of April, 2025.
Thank you.
I want to approve.
I'm second. There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Anyone? Seale have a few words?
Mayor, Council, again, thank you for your support. I know I have come to you with a lot of requests lately, and I want to, I want to thank you for that, especially my staff and of course, our police dispatch for doing an amazing job. But they are truly the backbone of our, our community because they're the first ones that answer the call when there's truly a need for our community, and we couldn't have done it without them. They have the training that they need to get that call out to us and give us the right information so that we can help our community out. So it is my pleasure, it is a great asset to have these individuals as part of our team because without them, it's just impossible to, for us to get together and make sure that we are providing the best service we can for our community. So I would like to appreciate everything that our dispatchers do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone else? Okay.
Do you have both proclamations or just one? Just one? Okay, we give one for each.
Okay, next item is a proclamation for Keep Mission Beautiful.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. How are you doing this afternoon? I'm going to let Anais Chapa read the proclamation. She's been the one who has been keeping Mission Beautiful and doing everything she can to keep our city beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, Keep Mission Beautiful is a beautification committee formed by the City of Mission City Council on October 24, 2022. And whereas, the purpose of this committee is to promote public interest in the general improvement of the environment of the City of Mission and to initiate, plan, and direct, and coordinate programs for litter control and solid waste management for the community on a sustainable basis. And whereas, Keep Mission Beautiful is committed to implementing and maintaining Keep Texas Beautiful's mission by leading cleanups, actively engaging local residents, promoting sustainability, and making a lasting impact on our community. And whereas, Keep Texas Beautiful, a statewide nonprofit dedicated to environmental sustainability and community improvement, has recognized Keep Mission Beautiful as a Silver Star affiliate. Silver Star is a designation awarded to high-achieving communities committed to environmental excellence. And whereas, this organization is dedicated to developing plans for improving the overall health, sanitation, safety, and cleanliness of the City of Mission by beautifying streets, alleys, lots, yards, parks, and other similar places in said city. And whereas, Keep Mission Beautiful is proud of its natural resources and encourages the planting and preservation of trees, flowers, plants, and shrubbery to improve our community and neighborhoods. And whereas, Keep Mission Beautiful will continue to enhance the qualities of the City of Mission by implementing beautification initiatives and educating and engaging our community on our mission to keep Mission Beautiful. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Keep Mission Beautiful Month. And we encourage all residents to do their part in ensuring that the City of Mission continues to be a beautiful place for everyone to live, work, and play. We also invite the community to make every step count towards a cleaner and greener mission by participating in our inaugural Earth Day 5K, taking place this Saturday, April 26, sorry, not this Saturday, on Saturday, April 26, at 7:30 a.m. at the Mission Hike and Bike Trails, proclaimed on this 14th day of April, 2025.
I want to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and congratulations. You in it?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I just want to say on behalf of Keep Mission Beautiful that we're really grateful for all of you guys' involvement and contribution to our committee. I was really impressed with the, with the turnout that we had recently at our trash bash, and Mayor, thank you for coming out, and Councilwoman Gerilak, thank you for coming out as well. We really did make an impact, and I think really, the generations that we're impacting is not only our city immediately, but the generations in the future as well by instilling those values of being clean and making the city look beautiful. So thank you guys for supporting us, and we're going to keep Mission Beautiful.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all want to come up here?
Yes, yes, yes. He takes my place. Yes. Yes. It was a great event, yes. The turnout was just really awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Autism Awareness Month. Ms. DeHirina?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'll be reading the today's proclamation. Whereas, individuals with autism have unique abilities that enrich our world. Despite the challenges they face, they demonstrate incredible resilience and strength in navigating a world they may not always understand them. Autism Acceptance Month, which began in 1972, the Autism Society is a powerful reminder of the importance of promoting acceptance, celebrating differences, and embracing autistic individuals. Whereas, autism affects not only the diagnosed individual, but the entire family and the community at large. Whereas, while there is no current identified cause or cure for autism, the Bebels Angel Autism Organization provides outreach, training, parent support, meeting, and advocacy to offer hope for those who are affected by autism. Whereas, with autism diagnosis rates increasing fast, we take these 30 days to celebrate as we come together to celebrate the unique qualities and strength of autistic individuals and empower them with education, workforce opportunities, and inclusion. Now, therefore, we, the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of April Autism Acceptance Month in the City of Mission, and invite the community to the Third Annual Superhero Autism Day this Saturday, April 19, at 11 a.m. at our all-inclusive Lyons Park, and encourage all citizens to become educated about autism, support organizations such as Bebels Angels to bring hope to the individuals with autism spectrum disorder, proclaimed on this 14th day of April, 2025.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we also have Chief Torres that would like to say a couple of words, and Ms. Gomez from Bebels Angels.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Council, Chief Torres, what an honor to be part of this event coming up on Saturday. We're so blessed to have people who care for this cause, and so, for the entire City of Mission, we invite everyone to join us this Saturday at Lyons Park, and so, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Andrew wants to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Andrew.
On behalf of Andrew, David, Allison, and all the individuals with autism, we thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Andrew.
Mayor and Councilmen and women, thank you so much again for having us here. Bebels Angels, like Amy said, we are an organization that brings awareness. I read an article today, this week, it's talking about Kennedy doing some research. We welcome any research to find out why this happens to our children, but it's not a disease, it's a neurological disorder. And it surprised me that they're saying it's a pandemic, and it's on the rise. It is on the rise, but the only reason it's on the rise is because of everyone, the community, yourselves, the awareness we bring to the community, the education we bring also as well, to understand our children, because we deal with our children 24/7. I am a great-grandmother raising four of my great-grandchildren, three with autism. You see them here behind, these are my great-grandchildren, all three have autism. And it's very important for the education, the awareness, and every city being involved. I am so grateful that Mission joined us in this collaboration in, in making awareness. The walks that we do every year, it is an awesome event that we have, we do welcome everybody to come and join us. I thank Chief Torres for always being at our side, Amy, and Bebels Angels is very, very grateful for the City of Mission in allowing us to do this. Awareness is important, education important, and also inclusion. So we thank you so much, and we hope to see all of you at the walk on Saturday. Thank you, again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to take a picture? I don't have a free. Thank you. Week.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. And...
and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only state and national law, but a fundamental human concept and right for all people in the United States. And whereas the Federal Housing Act recognizes, supports, and encourages the rights of every person regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, disability, and age to live in the housing of the individual's choice. And whereas the anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby designate the month of April as Fair Housing Month, Fair Housing, the Act in Action, and National Community Development Month, and further proclaim April 21st through the 25th of 2025 as National Community Development Week, proclaimed on this the 14th day of April 2025.
One more to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. The proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you.
On behalf of the Advisory Committee and on behalf of myself, the chairman, we'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity and putting the correct individuals on the advisory board so that way we can continue improving the City of Mission. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. All righty.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You want to come up here for the picture? Okay, the next item is a proclamation for Fair Housing Month and National Community Development Week.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and thank you. Before I read the proclamation, I'd like to introduce my support system back here. So I have Mr. Lorenzo Garza, he's our chairman for our Citizens Advisory Committee, our CAC, and Mr. Emilio Villanueva, who's our vice chair. Ms. Esther Rivera, she's with our CDPG Community Development Department, and Ms. Monica Gonzalez as well. So our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented Community Development Block Grant Program in 1974 to provide local governments with the financial resources required to primarily meet the needs of the low and moderate income persons. And whereas the City of Mission has utilized nonprofit organizations to address neighborhood and human needs. And whereas the City of Mission's CDPG program has made a significant impact on our community by funding programs for youth services, health services, services for elderly and disabled, housing assistance programs, economic development, public infrastructure improvements. And whereas the City of Mission has developed a strong relationship between the city and its residents, principally those of low and moderate income. And whereas the month of April 2025 has been reserved for recognition and appreciation of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And whereas the National Fair Housing Law of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only state and national law, but a fundamental human concept and right for all people in the United States. And whereas the Federal Housing Act recognizes, supports, and encourages the rights of every person regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, disability, and age to live in the housing of the individual's choice. And whereas the anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby designate the month of April as Fair Housing Month, Fair Housing, the Act in Action, and National Community Development Month, and further proclaim April 21st through the 25th of 2025 as National Community Development Week, proclaimed on this the 14th day of April 2025.
One more to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. The proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you.
On behalf of the Advisory Committee and on behalf of myself, the chairman, we'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity and putting the correct individuals on the advisory board so that way we can continue improving the City of Mission. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. All righty.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You want to come up here for the picture?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Perez, Rick Minniss here with the Boys and Girls Club of Mission. Joining us today from the United Way are Lily Lopez, the CEO, and board members Gerardo Paz and Larry Gonzalez. We're here to support the United Way of South Texas as they celebrate their 44th year in existence. Also, a board member, Mr. Plata, thank you so much. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas United Way of South Texas has been a steadfast partner in improving lives and strengthening communities throughout the region for the past 44 years. And whereas United Way of South Texas supports local nonprofit agencies that provide critical services through our 75 local programs and that focus on healthy communities, youth opportunities, financial security, and community resiliency. And whereas the United Way of South Texas mobilizes and connects businesses, community leaders, nonprofit organizations, and volunteers to address pressing local needs through collaborative efforts and targeted initiatives. And whereas the United Way of South Texas annual campaign is a vital source of funding for over 20 nonprofit agencies and over 75 programs, including directly impacting 8,555 Mission residents through our very own Boys and Girls Club and United Way's Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program at our Spear Memorial Library. That generated $456,000 in tax returns for 315 families this year and many other community impact efforts that serve children, families, seniors, and individuals in crisis. And whereas the United Way of South Texas initiatives such as Back to School, In-Style Shopping Spring, Day of Caring, VITA with Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, and the Spirit of Christmas, the United Way of South Texas ensures that the most vulnerable members of our community receive the support they need to thrive. Whereas the United Way of South Texas, through collective impact of these programs and initiatives, not only strengthens individual lives, but also contributes to building a more unified, prosperous community for all. Whereas community involvement and support of United Way's mission is an investment in stronger, healthier, and more resilient South Texas region, now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim our support for the United Way of South Texas and encourage all citizens, employees, and businesses to participate in the support of the United Way 2025 through contributions, volunteerism, and advocacy, proclaimed on this 14th day of April 2025.
Is there a motion? May I make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, any second to approve. The proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Well, thank y'all for recognizing us. We appreciate it. We appreciate your support from your employees and the community. We serve on the board and all of us have full-time jobs and responsibilities, but certainly, you know, serving the community is something very important. And I think everybody knows who the United Way is and what you may not know is how many people we serve. We serve Star in Hidalgo County. Last year, we served over 100,000 residents for that area, so it's very important. And we have multiple programs and services that are available for people in need. We're glad to be part of it and we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
And thank you for everything y'all do. Thank you so much. Anybody else? No? Okay. All right. You want to step up here for a picture?
I love you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, sure. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
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 This is my chair.
And in our excitement, I did not ask for the vote to approve the proclamation. So, may I have a motion?
We motioned.
Did we?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then we did it.
And I abstain, but I abstain, but thank you for doing such a great job and it's an honor for me to serve with the board. And it just, the tremendous help that y'all gave to the community. So thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next item is a presentation of a donation received by the Mission Historical Museum.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I am accompanied by my vice chair, Ms. Elizabeth Garza, and our secretary, Ms. Diana Alcozado. And of course, I'm Cynthia Lopez, your museum director. We are the proud recipients of $10,000 worth of funding towards our preservation efforts to keep the rich history of the City of Mission and Western Hidalgo County going for future generations. This funding opportunity was made possible by the Heritage Foundation of Hidalgo County. I believe we have Mr. Spud Brown, the treasurer, with us, Ms. Adela Ortega, who is now the chair of the committee, president of the committee. And is there someone that I'm missing? And so they're here today to present us with this very generous donation. So please, I welcome you all to help me thank them for this generous donation and there's going to be more to come.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, the Heritage Foundation of Hidalgo County is dedicated to preserving not only collections, but any institution whose efforts are dedicated to preserving history. So we'll be utilizing the money for our storage and collections purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And of course, we welcome any of you that would like to come and take a photo.
Yes.
This donation of Heritage Foundation of Hidalgo County is a nonprofit organization for Hidalgo County that serves museums. And we give $10,000 to Mission for their museum so that they save the images and things that Mission has. You have a great deal with citrus, with the citriots and all that. And you have your cherry building that is a museum. And we are glad that you give this amount as a charity to the museum.
Thank you.
(applause) I sing it, Rory Rose, and I'd like you to participate in it. And it's called "Valley Song." And you'll stand up, please. This is a primary deal. As you follow my instructions here, my hands, we will have fun. For we love our valley home, where down the falls are real friends. Land down yours and land down mine, land down the palm trees and the bracts of shade. Here we live in paradise, where roses bloom on every hand. For we love our valley home, where down the falls are real friends. Yeah. (applause) And at the end, we sing "The High School" with the cymbals. We sang that right after we sang "The President leaves." And that is a valley song. I thank you for listening.
I do want to say one more thing. We have received $5,000 in the past of funding from the Heritage Foundation, which was used for the restoration of the Cleo Dawson portraits, which will be featured in our summer exhibit, "She Came to the Valley Behind the Scenes," opening June 2nd. Thank you so much.
I don't think we've had that much fun in a long time here. Yeah. Okay. Next item is the report from Mission Economic Development Corporation. Try to beat that one, Teklo. Teklo, are you gonna?
Mr. Brown has the name to even beat Teklo. Spud Brown, right? You can't beat that and he wasn't scared to do that. Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. Just to give you a quick update on some of the things that we've been up to here in the last several weeks, you have some presentations in front of you, I think, in lieu of having our PowerPoint up on the screen. I'd like to go through a couple of those, some of the things that we've been able to do. On page three of the presentation, you have a slide that shows the Ruby of Adventures the Competition. That is something we're involved with right now. Of course, you know, we did this last year where this is the Shark Tank-like competition for small businesses in Mission. And we hand out awards of 10, 15, and 25,000 to Mission small businesses, especially new businesses under two years old. This is great for startups. The catch here is they have to go through a six-week course that we've partnered with UTRGV and the Kaufman folks from Kansas City on this. And they get training for six weeks. And then after the training is when they can choose to compete into a pitch competition. And this year is June 13th. But, or they can just take the education they received and move along. And so, last year, we had several pitch, I think like seven of the 10 that we, applications or small businesses that we accepted into the program. And these entrepreneurs are really, really sharp and were able to help them in a certain way, thanks to our board and of course, thanks to City Council for investing in small businesses here in Mission. So we look forward to another one. I think the eligibility, the application process is still open until when? What? 25th of this month. And so, and then we'll go through the process in choosing with the committee and then we'll go to the education and competition. So I want to thank you for that. And I want to let people in Mission know that they can still apply for this. On the next page, or this would have been page three, sorry about the number confusion. Stephanie Mendiola, my colleague, and I attended the Viva Fresh Conference, which is the conference, the biggest produce conference in the Southwest, put on by the Texas International Produce Association, which is based here in Mission, run by Dante Galiassi, many of you who you know. Very interesting conference, a lot of Mission-based businesses there, including Wonderful Citrus, La Bonanza Avocados, and several others. But obviously, the hot topic here was tariffs and trade, and that's going to impact produce quite a bit. About one-third of the conference or more was attended by Mexican nationals and people who had businesses in Mexico, because they're our fruit basket. And so they have a lot of produce coming in from Mexico. In fact, right now, you can see an HEB commercial campaign on TV for their blackberries. And I forget what they're called now, but it's ubiquitous, it's run constantly over and over. And it says, "Blackberries in Texas." It doesn't say "from Texas." They say "blackberries in Texas," because they're from Mexico. And HEB sources a lot of what they have from Mexico. And so Mexico is a very important partner. And so, Mexico's a very important partner. And they'll continue to provide produce to us. So, anyway, that was a big deal. It was attended by about 2,000 folks, a lot of from the Valley. Another event that, an event that we put on ourselves is part of our series of educational events called Business Over Breakfast, where we put on a breakfast event for a lot of small businesses and other business owners in our network. And this time, it was our focus of this event, and they switch up every time, and we have them quarterly, was artificial intelligence or AI. So, we brought down a speaker. And there was a lot of learning that took place, a lot of eye-opening presentations from Drew, who came down, or Andrew Davis, he goes by Drew Davis, to give us this particular presentation. We also had Caliza Benavides from Toyota also talk about, she's an attorney, also talked about some of the legal aspects of AI. But Mayor, I think that you were there, Councilmember, you were there also. And I don't know if you had one quick takeaway from the, what would you say your takeaway was from that workshop?
My takeaway was that I'm way behind. Yeah, I'm way behind. And you have another one coming up this week as well, right?
Yes.
Another short workshop?
I forget the date of it, Mayor, unless Belen knows.
Belen?
Well, it's with SDC. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, yeah, it was extremely informative. And the world is evolving, and AI is here. And it was, yes.
Squirrel brain. Our chairman was here. It really is, it was incredible. It does show how far behind some of us are. But it's, even if we don't jump in with both feet, now we know what's happening around us, right?
Exactly.
And we're building some awareness with AI. And you can build your twin, your doppelganger on AI and start doing some more work, right? So, but it was very good. This is one of the many things that we covered. But thank you for attending, you know, and supporting us through that. On the next page is the NASCAR Conference. That's the North American Strategic Competitive Organization. It's a trade group that we belong to. They had their annual meeting. This year was in Fort Worth. They're based out of Dallas, and they focus on trade issues. So, you can imagine what the conversations were like right now with the tariffs in play. And so, we discussed a lot of, it was one of the weirdest things that I've been to, a conference into which news was breaking by the hour, by the day, about tariffs. And we were there to discuss trade and tariffs. So, that was really interesting, and decisions were being made while we were there. But you had professionals everywhere, from IBC Bank to some of the biggest conglomerates in Monterrey and Dallas-Fort Worth, in Canada, the West Coast. They were all at this conference. It was very interesting to listen to their points of view. And this is something that we do as the EDC. We try to attend these trade conferences and represent Mission and represent the Valley and try to input our thought and concerns when it comes to these things. So, it's important to be at the table. They have a really good relationships in Mexico City and Washington. And so, we often go to them with our concerns, and they go to bat for us. There are some pictures there that was part of the Allegiant Airport, or Lyons Airport in Fort Worth, which is a cargo-only, and it's an intermodal airport where planes and trains and trucks all mix together to move goods. The next page is Ubiquity. We, Ubiquity had a one-year anniversary party at their location on South Sherry Road. They've rented out, they started out with like 20-something thousand square feet, and I think they're at 40-something thousand square feet now. They've gone from zero employees to more than 300. Their goal is to get to 350 by the end of the year. The other photo that you see there is them using the seed to train their employees when they have big groups. And so, we've been able to help them do that. The employees here make a decent wage to start, anywhere from $15 to $18 to start. And then they get a lot of really good benefits. Ubiquity is very generous that way. And they have break rooms and lounges and all through their facility. They're obviously a call center, but they're more of a customer support that works with fintechs and government agencies to provide government, pardon me, customer service and back shop support. In this picture, the CEO is kind of the little guy in the T-shirt there. That's how they dress, apparently. I'm in a full suit, because I didn't know any better when I went over there. But the CEO came, he's based in New York City, and several of their senior vice presidents, they're all over the world, they came just to mark this event. So, really glad to have them there. I want to thank you also for supporting our economic development efforts, because we helped them with some incentives at this place. So, they're really going gangbusters. Really proud of them. That concludes our presentation for now. We do have some things coming up. One I'd like to mention is the Mission EDC will be at one of the biggest business development and trade shows in the country. It's called Select USA, and it's in Washington, DC. And it's just where Washington, the US government, and others recruit companies from around the world to invest in the United States and use this platform to get them in front of you and to talk to them and sell them on Texas, sell them on the Rio Grande Valley, and sell them on Mission. We're there at the Governor's, EDC's invite. The Governor's Economic Development Corporation, which is run by Aaron Dimmerson, and also the Adriana Cruz, which is the Governor's Economic Development Director, invited us to join them at the Texas booth. So, we want to take advantage of that and represent Mission while we're there. So, really proud to go to that. And we hope to start making some endroads with more foreign direct investment. So, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is the report from our Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and Mike. Wonderful activities happening at the Chamber of Commerce. Tomorrow, actually, on the 16th, we do have our Lunch and Learn Program happening. The topic is, "Are You Lender Ready?" with Angela Burton from the Small Business Administration. We still have seats for this luncheon, so we do invite anybody that is interested in any funding opportunities and where they are in the process, please come join us. And it will be, it will take place at our host partners, Mission EDC Center for Education and Economic Development. That same day, we also have a webinar on, the topic is "Forming Your Texas LLC." And that is in partnership with the SBDC over at UTRGV. We have a couple of ribbon cuttings coming up on the 17th and 23rd. The 17th, it's in mind and out. It is located in Los Milagros Tech, Mission, Texas. So, we're excited that business continues to flourish in that area. And the ribbon cutting for Estreitas Childcare Center is scheduled for the 23rd at 9:45 a.m. And we do have a special remarks presentation and appearance from Congressman Monica DeLaCruz. So, we do invite the Mayor and Council to join us if you're available. And internally, we have our Chamber Champions Meeting and Membership Blitz, where we will be going out to the community and recruit members, and the business members that are not Chamber members yet. So, it's a group of us that's going to get together, we're going to split into teams, and we're actually going to go on the ground and go visit businesses that are not members or have been members at one point and drop their membership. And upcoming, our Mission Golf Tournament is happening on May 2nd here at the Sherry Municipal Golf Course. Proceeds of the event will be to Mission CISD students, and we're really excited. And May 6 is Mayor's Evening of Prayers, happening at the Mission Event Center. It is open to the entire community. Please let us know you're coming, whether it's on Facebook or through the Eventbrite link. And May 7, we have our milestone celebration for the Chamber. So, we do invite everyone to come up. That's all I have.
All righty. Thank you. The next item is our departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Does anyone have any questions or a motion? Okay. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second to accept the departmental reports as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five-zero. Next item is citizens' participation. Ms. Anna?
Yes, ma'am. We have Alex Leal. She'd like to speak on Agenda Item Number 55 regarding Mission Police Association Local 293.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name's Alex Leal. I'm the Union President for the Mission Professional Law Enforcement Association, and I'm here to address some recent events and clarify the current status of police representation within City Mission. Recently, the Mission Police Association attempted to circulate a petition aimed to preventing the Mission Professional Law Enforcement Association from addressing the City Council and the Mayor. This action unfortunately forced MPLA to take a defensive stance. It is deeply concerning that this petition's drive relied on what we believe to be misinformation, inaccuracies, and even intimidation tactics to garner signatures from officers. This created unnecessary division and distrust within our ranks. However, the outcome of this effort proved to be futile. Upon investigation, MPLA discovered a critical piece of information. The name Mission Police Association has not been properly registered with the State of Texas and the Secretary of the State since 2008. In fact, its existence was involuntarily terminated by the state in that very year. Upon learning this and to ensure continuity of legitimate police representation, MPLA applied and secured the registration of the name Mission Police Association. A name that was available precisely because it had been left unregistered for over a decade. You may hear claims that another organization operates under the name Mission Police Association Local 293. It is important to understand that this name too has never been registered with the Texas Secretary of the State and has no legal history whatsoever. The 293 appended to it, appended to it is in fact the former badge number of a prior union president. Therefore, despite the recent drama and the spread of misinformation, Mission Professional Law Enforcement Association stands as the only legally recognized and legitimate police union representing the dedicated officers for the Mission Police Department. We understand that the Texas Municipal Police Association branch from our department may be working to recognize, to reorganize the situation. We look forward to working with them. We look forward to them getting back on their feet and operating effectively. Unlike the recent actions taken by them, our union clearly states that we are not engaging in any attempts to silence any members. At the end of the day, we all have a voice, not just one, not just 167. We remain committed to representing our officers professionally and ethically, and we look forward to continuing our work in partnership with the City of Mission and with the City Council and the Mayor and the City Manager. In ending, we are available to continue with collaborative bargaining. We got a lot done in four years when we were doing that. So, thank you for the time. My district representative is here, as well as my Vice President. If you guys have any questions, thank you for the time. And if anything else is needed, you all know how to get ahold of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's signed up?
No.
Nope. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda are the Consent Agenda Items, and those are Items 14 through 39.
May I move to both the Consent Agenda Item with the exception of Item Number 21?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented, except for Item Number 21. And that will have, Item Number 16 is Resolution Number 1977. Number 18 is Resolution 1978. And Number 23 is 1979. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Would you like to address this in executive session, or do you want to address it right now?
I was just wondering if there is, I know there is a committee that will be formed to review the bids. Since this is federal funding, I don't know if two members of the Council can be part of the committee.
Sure.
To make sure, I mean, I think it's, I would like to see this process and be going a lot faster than what happened last time.
Okay.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So, Item 21, yes, we're going to form a committee of your choice. It's usually the City Engineer, myself, and whoever wants for you to assign. That's not a problem. And we'll be reviewing qualifications from engineering firms to pick the most qualified for the testing, material testing, the inspection, and the management of that project, which is Taylor Road Phase Two from Business District Three to Mall Two. Definitely, yes, whoever you want assigned to that committee, that's welcome.
All righty. I have a quick question. So, this is for qualifications for engineering services for inspection, material, and construction management. Is that, so are you soliciting for three different companies, or is it one company that does everything?
Yes.
One company that does everything?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
And those companies can partner up. Like, for example, for Phase One, we had hired SAMCS, and they partner with MEG, Millennium Engineering Lab. They can also do that.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Because we don't have a City Engineer right now beside, you're playing their role right now, right?
Correct. Yes.
Other two members that you would like to have on the committee, because that could be part of the motion to approve us to go out and then assign two members.
Okay. I'd like to assign Marissa and Ruben Plata to the committee. And then JP, and then if you can have two other staff members.
Sure.
To make it five.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do you want to make a motion?
So, I would like to make a motion to appoint a review committee based on the members appointed by Mayor, myself, Councilwoman Marissa Garlick, Assistant City Manager Engineer, Mr. Terrazas, and then two members that you will be appointing.
Okay. Is there a second? All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five-zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is public hearing. And the first item is a rezoning request.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. The first rezoning is a rezoning from a single-family residential to General Business District C3. This is at the northeast corner of Fifth Street and Carolum Street. This property used to be commercial, but we got rezoned, the whole neighborhood got rezoned to a single-family residential back in 2005. The property owners at the time were not disposed, were not disposable to object.
Is that a picture?
Do we have a site map?
It's not working.
It's not working?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. It's page 227.
To your meeting packet.
Yes.
This is Item Number 109.
Yeah. It's page number 227.
But it's not there, no?
I don't see it yet.
So, in your meeting packet, you'll see an aerial photograph that shows the existing commercial building. That building was built in 1974, so it's been a business for many years. But like I mentioned, it got rezoned to a single-family residential when the whole neighborhood got downzoned. The owner is here, and she would like for the property to be rezoned commercial again.
I think they're asking it to be a C2. Okay?
And there was no opposition from the surrounding property owner. commercial. So, it's businesses that cater to the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Go ahead. Good afternoon. Come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Frances Castillo, Twenty-Two-O-Two, Nickel Drive in Mission, and I'm here with my mother-in-law, Alicia Castillo, who is the owner of the property at Seven-O-One, Ramiro Abrizal...Rafael Ramirez. And we...at the time when the original, it all got rezoned as residential, my father-in-law was very ill, and we were not able to attend those meetings. However, the property has been a church for the last over five years, and we're just requesting that it remain the same as commercial property.
Okay. All right.
Anyway, was it approved?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online, Ms. Anna?
No.
No? Okay. Is there a motion?
I saw more.
Second.
There's a motion, Annie, second, to approve the C Two as recommended by planning and zoning for the property at Seven...what was it, Seven-O-One, Rafael Ramirez?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item?
Is that Ordinance Number?
Fifty-Six Twenty-Two.
So, this is a rezoning at the northeast corner of Barnes and Washington Avenue from single-family residential to a duplex, a fourplex. There is an existing home in the property, an older frame house. There is an investor that is interested in purchasing the property to demolish the older home and build a fourplex development. You have a survey in your pocket. The property measures one hundred and twenty feet by one hundred and fifty feet, a total of eighteen thousand square feet. The code requires for a fourplex in an R-two zone, eight thousand two hundred feet. So, this property exceeds the minimum for duplex, a fourplex by nine thousand eight hundred square feet. So, that's lots of property to work with for a fourplex development. There is a multifamily. You have...across the street, you have two dwelling units in one lot, and in Carney Corner, you have a duplex, and then south of that, you have a triplex. So, there is a zoning for duplex, fourplex across the street to the west, and then Carney Corner to the southwest. There was no opposition from the surrounding property owners, so the planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone online? Okay. Are there any questions or a motion?
May I move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request from single-family to R-two at One Thousand Four Washington Avenue, and that would be Ordinance Fifty-Six Twenty-Three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
The next item is a conditional use permit for a pool house. This is at the northeast corner of Twenty-Fourth, East Twenty-Fourth Street and Stewart Road. The swimming pool is already there, so they just want to...they would like to build a pool house to accompany the pool. You have a floor plan. You have a site plan. It's in compliance with the setbacks. There was no opposition from the surrounding property owners. PNC recommended approval unanimously. And then there's a list of conditions in your pocket.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay. Anyone online?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for a pool house at Sixteen-O-Three East Twenty-first Street, and that would be Ordinance Number Fifty-Six Twenty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is replat.
This is a replat subject to conditions and granting a variance to the R-one-A lot requirements for the east one twenty feet of Lot Thirteen, Perla de Naranja subdivision. The address is Seventeen Ten Corrales Street. This subdivision is in the northern edge of the city, on the east side of Stewart Road. This is a subdivision that was annexed, I think it was in 2008. They're half-acre lots, and the property owner would like to split his half-acre lot into two lots measuring sixty feet by one forty feet. There is an existing mobile home in one of the...on the west side of the property. So, he would like to split it and then sell the other...the east half of the property. He submitted a petition in support, signed by some of the property owners. Two signatures got canceled during the planning and zoning commission meeting. One of the owners said that she wasn't feeling well, and she, you know...but she was signing, and then the other one, it was the husband, but he didn't check with the wife, so the wife canceled his signature. There was considerable opposition to this replat request from the neighborhood. Several people showed up to speaking in opposition. They expressed concerns with traffic and possible additional crime. Based on the considerable opposition, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this approval to the proposed replat.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, if you could, you could come up to the podium, please? And if you would give us your name and your address, please.
Angelita Esparsa, Sixteen Seventeen Corrales Street, and all the neighbors there, most of them oppose this because the owner already has a mobile home there. He wants to put, I guess, another mobile home. I really don't know, but it's only one family. We have been there living for about forty-five years, and all my neighbors, we were a happy family there, and we don't want anymore. We already have a lot of new people coming in with a lot of noise. Just last night, there were three police cars in one of the neighbor's house. We don't want that to happen. We're all people already, and we just want to live in peace. Our kids grew up there, like one big family, and it was quiet, it was peaceful. And the owner is being greedy. He already has a rental mobile home there, and he wants more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor. My name is Hugo Garcia. I'm the engineer for this project. I'd like to excuse us. During the time that the planning and zoning was held, I was in a hospital and could not attend. I know there's been some confusion as far as what the intent is for this particular re-subdivision. The owner's here with me. He can go ahead and attest to what his plans are. There is no rental properties to be proposed. They're gonna be removing the trailer and building two homes. He has two sons. It's no more than a family partition in this area that he already owns. So, I'm gonna go ahead and pass some mic to him so he can give you his plans.
Si, lo que quería era, si se puede, dividir la...el terreno para construir dos casitas ahí, porque una tráiler vieja que ya no...si se puede, si es la forma. Tengo dos hijas, quería dejarle a cada una.
Okay.
Si, es. Era mi proyecto.
Okay. Gracias.
Ese es una zona...pues la única tráiler vieja que hay es ahí. Quería sacar todo eso para construir algo bonito ahí.
Okay. Okay. Gracias. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? If you'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Maria Rodriguez, and we're in Lot Number Two, Sixteen-O-Five Corrales, and we have been there since...we bought the property in seventy-five, and we've been there since seventy-eight. And I am totally against this. The reason that we bought this property is, if you're not aware, I think eighteen of the lots are half-acre lots, and one is...one or two are a little bit more, maybe three-quarter of an acre. The fact that we're not on top of each other was the lure to this subdivision. Dividing a lot, I don't really care what the intent is. I don't want it. I don't...that's the way we're used to, and that's the way we want, and we don't want anything changed. In this subdivision, as Mrs. Esparsa said, I'd like to say eleven of us are senior citizens, and of those other lots, we have one, two, three, four, five, six that are second generation, that their parents owned the lots, passed it to their kids, and moved, and we want it kept that away. We do have a couple of new owners, and they're okay with the half acres, and they're doing...we got it right now. We've got two houses being built, and there's one in the process of being built. But we do not want the sub...I do not want the subdivision changed, you know? And I also have a beef to complain to the city because I did not get the letter. I'm the second lot as you enter, but this is a subdivision that the entry and the exit are the same. What happens in the front of the subdivision is just as important to me as what happens in the back. I found out from a neighbor that this was happening. I came to the first meeting. So, in the future, planning and zoning needs to let all of us know when anything like this ever happens again. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Marco Salas, and I live in Lot Fourteen, Seventeen Hundred Corrales Street. Just want to say I'm with them, too. We don't approve. I'm here for my parents, who are elderly, and couldn't make it over, so I'm talking for them. Just they're not...they wouldn't want to do any changes. They would like just keep it the same until they can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone online?
Where is this subdivision?
No?
Please.
Are there any questions or a motion?
May I move to approve the recommendation of planning and zoning, the denial of the replat request?
Second. Okay, there's a motion to approve the recommendation by P and Z, which is to deny the replat request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item, approvals and authorizations. Item Number Forty-four. Yes.
So, we have at El Divino Redentor Church on Los Ebanos, south of Barnes, we have a Vanguard school there, and they would like to install two portable buildings to improve the school operations, but the fire department is needing an egress. In case of an emergency, the fire truck is able to access...there's a site plan in your pocket. In case of an emergency, the fire truck will be able to egress to the park site. So, the proposal is to allow a cut in the green area of the park so that if there's an emergency or the fire department is to go in there for different things that they can exit to the parking lot of the park and then exit on the alley to bars. So, this is the first step to getting this project going. If this is approved, then the next step is to apply for a conditional use permit for the portable buildings, and there will be public hearings. One of the conditions that we...that staff imposed is that they have to overlay the alley between the parking lot all the way to Barnes, and this is for safety purposes. And we had a conversation with the school officials, and they're in agreement that if it's for safety purposes for the fire truck. So, this is for your consideration. If this is approved, the next step is the processing of the conditional use permit for the portable buildings, and hopefully no opposition, and so ultimately the two portable buildings can be installed for the school.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, they can do the improvements and then come back and ask for a CUP for the portable buildings?
So, if this is approved, it's kind of approved in concept, right? The next step is to apply for the conditional use permit, have the public hearings, hopefully no opposition from the surrounding property owners, so you can approve the CUP, hopefully, with conditions. So, if everything is approved, then they can do the engineering and start the project to have that access point to the park.
Make sure we...
And then also require the overlay before we allow the moving of the portable buildings to the site.
So, where would they be placing the portable buildings?
So, first, they have to get the conditional use permit that is to be approved by you all after the public hearings. After that, we will work out the logistics with their engineers and their contractors to get the infrastructure done, the access, the cutting of the park property, and then the overlay of the alley, and then, okay, now we can give you your permit for the portable building. So, it's like...
Take a look at page Two-Eighty-Eight. It'll show it on page Two-Eighty-Eight. It'll be on the east side of that lot.
It's this piece right here.
To the back, yes.
Point it...
Two-Eighty-Eight.
Yeah. The point where you're talking about, on your screen.
Right here. It's on the east side. This is the...
It's in the back of the building.
Part of the building, and this is...and over here's the park.
On the side.
So, if you...it'll be right here.
So, that shaded area.
So, you would take all of the parking space on the back?
So, the project involves...
The portable buildings, yes.
Yes, the project involves losing two parking spaces.
Only two?
How many was that?
Two parking spaces that will be lost for this egress.
So, where would the fire truck go by in case there's an emergency? You're losing...
So, they will access from the school property to the parking lot, and then they will go to the portable buildings in the back in case of an emergency, and so that the fire truck doesn't have to go in reverse. They will exit to the north, to the city parking lot, and then exit on the alley to Barnes.
I'm very familiar with the property, so that's why I don't think there will be enough parking space. I think you will be eliminated more than two parking spaces.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
And go up through here?
Can I ask a question? So, do you know how many grades they currently have there? Because it's Vanguard, right?
It's Vanguard.
So, the portable buildings will be adding for more grade levels, too?
I'm not sure on that, and the officials from...
There it is. Right here.
Good evening. Yes, to answer your question, currently, we're up to sixth grade, and we're gonna add a grade level, one section, for next week.
For seventh grade.
Yeah. And then to answer another question, I think we're gonna eliminate maybe about ten parking spots in the back where the portable... parking spots in the back where the portable will be situated.
He mentioned two, so it's two of them. I'm very familiarized with the property, and I think I told you that, right? So I know that is, if you put those two portable buildings, which is, in my personal opinion, I'm, I'm against portable buildings, that is my personal opinion, but I think you will be eliminating pretty much because the parking spaces are not too far from each other when you, and so you put that along the fence on the, on the east side, you're not going to be able to park adjacent to the building.
On the back, yeah.
So there's more than ten parking spaces.
Yes, actually, the, we went through the church, and their board approved us to do that, so we're going to go ahead and submit that to you for approval at when it comes to that point.
Mr. Terrazas, I just want to make sure that that's, don't eliminate a lot. You're pretty much going to eliminate all the parking spaces on the west side, on the east side of the building. And it's no, it's more than two for sure. And more than ten.
They meant to city. The ten are in the back?
It's more than...
And you want the entrance to go in to have the city, um, the city side of the park, right? To enter and come?
No, they're going to enter through the main entrance of the church, if, if the fire truck's...
Which is on Los Ebanos?
Yeah, and then go through on the bottom part of the, the roadway, and then turn north. Then from there, they can exit through our, the paving that we'll construct, and then through the, through the alleyway for Barnes Road.
Uh-huh, through the back to go, when they pick up their kids or whatever?
Yeah, and pretty much they were saying that we can't turn on the park, because that's, that wasn't being allowed, so we're going to use the alleyway.
To go into Barnes?
Yes, to go into Barnes, should there be any to, to exit a fire truck.
Well, because, once again, there's a church, so you'd be, do we need those parking spaces for the church?
We, we, we asked their, their pastor and their board, and they, they permitted us to use the, the back, all the back area for the portable spaces, because they don't really use, in their operations, the back part of the parking.
Sir, and I, I mean, it's really none of my business, but has Vanguard discussed what option B would be if this gets denied? Because I understand growth, and I understand the vouchers that are coming out, and I want to get, I mean, I'm biased, because of course I work at La Jolla ISD, and I'm a product of Mission, but I understand that our families have the right to choose where they send their children to school, and I welcome any school into our, a beautiful city of Mission. But I do also know that your school wanted to open on another road, and that became kind of controversial, so I just wanted to see if this is not a solution. Because of safety, we still need to see what the neighborhood's going to say, and how you exit onto Barnes. I just like, would like to see a plan, like something physical of how you all are going to do it.
Yeah, we, we have all those plans, we just haven't submitted, because that's, we're not at that point yet. But we, we are committed to, to doing what you guys require us to do. That's why when Mr. Cervantes let us know about this, even though it's going to be a pretty additional investment to, to repay the alleyway behind going to Barnes, we, we're okay with that. So we're committed to that. And then when it comes to the Plan B, I know the churches, and I don't know if you guys know, but the church is in process of possibly purchasing about an acre and a half or two acres to the, just next to their, to their property at the south, and that would be Plan B, but I know that's a little bit, a few, months, months ahead. And if they approve it, because we're still planning to be there at least two more years to, to add any of those portables or any other portables there in that, in that vacant property once they own it. But I know that process has been delayed for some reason on the, on the...
But at least you all are planning.
Yes, we are planning.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Um, and again, we're very, being very strategic to where we place the students. The need for these portables are because they can come with restrooms, they can come with restrooms, and we're going to get to do all that to better serve all the students in the community of Mission. And right now, if, if we don't get it approved, that would really put us in a big bind for the upcoming, as they, the students in current grade level move up to another grade level. So we're humbly asking for, for your approval.
Thank you.
Uh, so, Mr. Terrantes, I have a question. So it, if we were to approve this resolution, then the next, the next step is a conditional use permit?
Exactly, yes.
But what has to happen between that approval and the request for the conditional use permit?
Nothing will happen. So you're kind of approving this in concept, in, one of the conditions in your resolution is that approval of this resolution does not guarantee approval of the conditional use permit.
Right.
Because we haven't, we haven't had public hearings, we haven't notified the surroundings, so we can't promise the conditional use permit.
Right.
But this is the first step, it's like getting to first base, right?
Yes, but my concern would be, would, would you, would there be any requirements for any of the improvements or the expenses of, of obtaining the conditional use permit beforehand?
No, no, so...
Okay.
So we're going to process, if this is approved today, we're going to process the conditional use permit next. It will probably go before you in two meetings from today. In that, in that packet, we're going to have a list of conditions, right? You have, you have to overlay the alley and the, all the other conditions. We have the public hearings, we hear from the surrounding property owners, and then you can approve it. You can add conditions if you want to, and then if it's approved, then they can do the infrastructure, because it's, it's approved. They, they have formal approvals...
Okay.
Of all the aspects.
Would you all be receptive to tabling the item and, and seeing both items together at the same time?
That's what I would like to, to...
Yeah.
I mean, why would you want to then to go through an expense? And if not, I mean, I mean, because you still got to send notices to the citizens around there. So I would like, I think it's a great idea for us to, for the two items to be presented.
Yeah, we, we can do it, you could table it, and then in two meetings from today, you could consider both at the same time, yes.
I just feel the way you, and with all the respect, but I do feel like the way you've presented to us is a little misleading, so just...
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Well, but why? Because he said city of Mission parking lot. He said two only, he never said there wasn't ten in the back.
Whoa.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cervantes, we just, because I see things differently. I think the ten was referring to the, the back portable buildings.
Yeah, I, I misunderstood his question. I was just talking about the, the city parking spaces.
What we're talking about.
Yeah, I just misunderstood his, his question. But yeah, within the church, yeah, it will be allowed, allowed.
Okay.
Are we going to table it?
So mayor, I'm going to table the item?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table item number forty-four for the next meeting. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
Item forty-five is a subdivision approval. This subdivision has been constructed, we have the certificates of completion. I had a, a beautiful slide for you, but I didn't, I didn't get to present it. So we got the certificates of completion from Public Works and Engineering, and then all the fees have been paid, so it's, the subdivision is ready for recording. This is at the southwest corner of Stewart and Solar Drive, and it's a small subdivision for single-family homes.
Okay. All right, are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Stewart Cove Phase Two subdivision. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
This is also a subdivision that has been completed on Stewart Road, just north of Venus eighty-three. It's a subdivision for townhomes. We got the certificates of completion from Public Works and Engineering, so all the infrastructure is in place, and all the fees have been paid, and the subdivision is ready for recording.
Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the plat as presented for Springwood Manor Estates. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor council. Uh, item number forty-seven, authorization, authorization to purchase Arctic Wolf cybersecurity solution software as a service from NetSync at a cost of one oh seven five eleven sixty-eight, utilizing DRCPO four eight six six. This agreement is for one year and five months. For this budget year would be thirty-one thousand six seventy-one eighty-eight, and we would, which is already budgeted for, and we would budget seventy-five thousand six three six forty-eight for next budget year. Solution will assist in enhancing security posture, twenty-four-seven monitoring using login gestion of all systems to include Microsoft three-sixty-five and Microsoft Defender EDR. It's a fully managed hosted security, information and event management, would collect and analyze security event data from various sources, such as applications, devices, servers, users, firewalls, to identify and respond to security incidents, facilitating compliance with security regulations and standards by providing audit trails and reports, log retention, security posture hardening, security journey guidance, internal and external vulnerability scanning and warranty. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of Arctic Wolf cybersecurity solution from NetSync. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item forty-eight, authorization to purchase cohesity backup and recovery solution from NetSync as at a total cost of one twenty-seven eight seven four twenty-nine, utilizing DRCPO four eight six six, and TIPS two three zero one oh five with respective budget amendment. The solution includes on-premise backup for PD and City Hall, and cloud backup for City Hall. Solution will improve the security posture by implementing a fortified backup system, which includes immutable, always-on encryption, right-on-read many, air gap, zero trust access controls, prevent unauthorized deletion or manipulation of backup data. It also includes backup for our Microsoft Office three-sixty-five, SharePoint, OneDrive, Exchange, Teams. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of cohesive, uh, cohesive backup and recovery solution from NetSync. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Mike Vernon.
Hi there. Good evening, mayor, city council, how are you?
Good.
Good. Uh, item number forty-nine, authorization to purchase seventeen thousand one hundred square feet of sod from Tri-Tex Grass via buy board number seven oh six dash two-three in the total amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for the greens and number one fairway at Sherry Municipal Golf Course as part of the golf course improvement plan funded by the MEDC with respective budget amendment. The MEDC approved golf course, golf course improvement program, uh, funding as part of the, their budget process. This was one of the projects to be implemented this fiscal year. MEDC board approved the reimbursement agreement at the board meeting on February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and city council approved the authorization of the reimbursement agreement on March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of seventeen thousand one hundred square feet of sod from Tri-Tex Grass. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Mayor, city council. Let's see, where do we start? Authorization to purchase ambulance equipment for Medic Six from Stryker, a sole-source vendor in the amount of two-hundred-and-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-four with thirty-seven cents. Mission Fire Department seeks authorization to purchase the ambulance equipment, including a five-year Pro Care Prevent Service Package from Stryker of a total cost of two-hundred-and-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars with thirty-seven cents. Stryker is a sole-source vendor, and this is a specialized equipment which will be used to equip departments Medic Six. The purchase is essential to ensure the ambulance meets operational and safety standards, enabling the departments to continue providing high-quality emergency medical services to the community. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of ambulance equipment for Medic Six from Stryker. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Approval for affiliation of the program agreement for clinical experiences between South Texas College and the Mission Fire Department. The agreement will allow STC students to complete hands-on training and gain real-world experience and professional setting under the supervision of the qualified personnel of the Mission Fire Department. Partnership aims to enhance student learning, support workforce development, and strengthen the collaboration between the college and local emergency service providers. Approval of this agreement will formalize the relationship and outline the responsibilities of both parties to ensuring a safe, effective, and educational clinical experience. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I have a question for Chief Silva.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Would the students be able to make referrals and give them other resources of the people that, of the clients that you all need to, to take to the hospital, or how would that work?
No, this whole purpose is just allowing the, the students who are at STC, South Texas Communications, to write on our boxes, on our ambulances, to allow them the partnership so they can get, and get cleared through writing on the ambulance, what's requested for hours...
Oh, okay, so they're just going to be observed. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions? Discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Uh, mayor, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Mission Fire Department requested and established fifty-four positions for the classified position of firefighter by adoption of ordinance five-five-four-seven for fiscal year twenty-four-twenty-five. We are asking to amend the ordinance to adopting three additional personnel to the classified position of firefighter for the Mission Fire Department. These positions will be very beneficial to the department when personnel are, are out on injury, sick, or vacation leave. Given the amount of emergencies handled by the fire EMS, additional personnel are needed to meet the community's demands. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second?
I guess I just want to confirm it's for this fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion or questions?
But are they going to do fire EMS or just fire?
Yes, we will. So I have, upon approval through the city council, I will be abolishing our eligibility list, because we are targeting our, to get paramedics, and then we have, we do have to train them. If they do come in paramedic firefighter certified, they can automatically go on the truck, knowing that it is essential for the program to continue where we're at, and also to reduce the cost of overtime that we're experiencing at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-six twenty-five.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Next item.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager. I have before you item number fifty-three, which is authorization toward the second and final renewal option with South Texas Landscapes and Irrigation and Pest Control LSE for the right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. The contract terms were for a one-year primary with two one-year options based on a two-percent increase for the second, for the, for the first renewal, and a zero-percent increase for the second and final renewal. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve, mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize and award the second and final renewal option for South Texas Landscapes. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item number fifty-four is approval of inter-local cooperation agreement between the county of Hidalgo, Texas, and the city of Mission, Texas, concerning the development of recreational trails connectivity project, connecting the existing Mission, Hidalgo, and MacAllen Second Street hike and bike facilities via a new location of fifteen-point-seven-mile-long, ten-foot-wide concrete path, which consists of four-point-six-four miles within city Mission, city Mission, city limits. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
Going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the inter-local cooperation agreement between the Hidalu County and the city of Mission concerning the development of recreational trails connectivity project. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Yes, Mayor, this is having to do with a petition from the MacAllen Police Association, Local two-ninety-three. I'm asking that you refer this into executive session.
Mission Police Department.
Oh, did I say, did I say Mission?
MacAllen.
Oh, my God. Sorry, Mission.
I didn't hear that, but okay. You're forgiven, Mike.
I'm sorry. Anyway, referring this to executive session, we have some information that was dropped off about five minutes before the meeting and need to seek the city attorney's opinion on it.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to item number fifty-six.
Basically, this is the presentation of financial reports for the month of November and December of this year. This is for presentation only.
Since we can't really present, we're going to, oh, okay.
He's got some flash.
Okay.
So it's easier to go through.
All righty. I think everybody has a copy.
Okay, Mr. Vidal?
Okay, basically, for the month of November, we were seeing that we had excess of revenue or expenditures in the amount of roughly six-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. And in the month of December, our revenues over expenditures came to a nine-point-three-million dollars, which basically brought us up to a fund balance of twenty-million-point-four. As you well know, that is normally in the month of December and January where we see a high influx of property tax collections. For this particular month, it was twelve point, close to thirteen million dollars, hence the high balance. And this is what we normally turn around and invest it until we need it in the future On the utility funds, basically, what we saw in the month of November, an excess of revenue or expenditures in the amount, bear with me, one-point-seven million dollars for the month of November, and it went down to two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand in the month of December because this is when we do one of the quarterly transfer outs for administrative costs associated with operations in the general fund. So that's why you saw a decrease on that, or else we would have been a million dollars as well over on that one. On the other funds, basically, they did perform pretty, pretty good. On the golf course, we had an excess of ninety-three, forty-five thousand on solid ways, an excess of revenue or expenditures, three-hundred-and-thirty, and on the event center, it wasn't that positive. It was, we were below by thirty-one thousand dollars. On the December, we reflect a positive amount of two-hundred-and-sixty, I'm sorry, thirty-thousands that we went over below on golf course, a hundred-and-eighteen on solid ways, and twenty-nine-thousand in, in event center. I'll need to see as to the finding reasoning as to why that occurred for that particular Any questions?
No, and this is only for presentation?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions?
How much do we receive on adult arrant taxes in December in sales tax?
Twelve. On sales tax? On sales taxes, it was one, one million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
Two million, one-oh-seven, two million, one-hundred-and-seven thousand on sales tax.
Two, two-point-one million.
Yeah.
The twelve million on adult arrant, eight-ninety-two, three-forty-four, what percentages as a total for this coming?
I would need to get back with you on that one, sorry, I didn't do that calculation.
Any, any idea?
The twelve million, usually, we have somewhere around ninety-six, ninety-six percent collection in the first two months. So as of December, we're talking about, I know that we have, I mean, just, just as a kind of estimate, I would say somewhere around eighty-five percent of collections to ninety percent. We get one last major payment in January.
The twelve million, what percentages of total projected taxes that we're going to get?
I think we can, we can help you. And we'll, we'll make sure this ended by, on the writing end for the total collection rates, both for December and January.
Any idea how much, how much do we collect on taxes?
It's over thirty percent.
Oh, yes, yes.
This is for November and December, so we still get, and in January, a lot of people.
In January, we can, so what we collected in the twelve million dollars is for payments that we received probably from October, November, or how far?
December.
December, so, you know, a lot of the mortgage companies paid by December first.
Either that, or, and, and the balance of a missing in January before the penalty.
So the county more or less, how long does it take for them to give us the money to?
Well, that's one of the things, normally, they held some in transit, so, so basically, they're, they're not that fast in giving us our money, but they usually deposit it every, every other week, roughly speaking. Because that's one of the things that I need to analyze on, on, on the receipts, because I've noticed that usually they have hold quite a few in transit, and we don't realize it until the following month. But that's one of the studies that I want to do on, on collections with the county.
Because that's about twenty-five percent of toll that we're going to be collecting.
Because we should be collecting a hundred percent, letting with approximately twenty-seven. Is that right, Vidal?
Yeah, around that. At least the cities portion.
That's just the city portion, because of the turds.
The twelve million includes the turds, right?
The twelve million, here does this one, this one doesn't include the turds.
It shouldn't.
This includes the turds, meaning it's twelve turds.
So the twelve million is, is what, about thirty-five percent of the twenty-seven
And so the remaining funds also get distributed to the debt service, right? All of the debt service funds go to the debt service account. So, but we'll get to an updated distribution schedule.
And you should already have the number for January and February.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we'll get you that.
Can you send it to?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next item?
Item fifty-seven.
Item number fifty-seven, authorize staff to get quotes for a five-year note for ambulance and equipment to be paid from the Fire Department Replacement Fund. This five-year note for the ambulance is going to be making it, what of the amount is going to be a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-seven-sixty-seven for equipment for medic six? It's going to be in the amount of two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three, totaling three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand to be paid, as I reiterated, from the Fire Department Replacement Fund. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to authorize staff to get quotes for five-year note for ambulance and equipment to be paid from the Fire Department Replacement Fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Item number fifty-eight is calling for the consideration of approval of resolution number?
Nineteen-eighty-one.
Nineteen-eighty-one, authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue cert. Issue certificates of obligation series twenty-twenty-five for the design, acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public works, and authorizing certain other rate matters relating thereto. Estrada, you know, municipal financial advisors will be submitted the required resolution. City manager recommends approval here before, as we have Bobby, if you have any questions that he'll ask.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Bobby Villal for Estrada, those are your financial advisors. Again, the document you have before you is the plan of finance that we're seeking in consultation with, with Mr. Mike Perez. If you go to page one, it looks like this one has the dead overview of the city. So just for the record, we are going to issue new money of about ten-point-two million for the projects at hand, but the boxed area, there's two bonds that are callable currently, and they were callable two-fifty and twenty-five. There's two of them for about eight, one of them's eight-point-five million, the other one's about two-point-one million. However, in the interest rate environment that we have right now, interest rates have risen, they've dropped, they've risen, and this is a small amount. It doesn't go too far out, it only goes to like twenty-thirty-one. So there's not a lot of meat on the bone, but we're going to put it out there simultaneously to see if any of the banks are receptive to giving a good rate. If there is a good rate, we'll come back to the staff with Mike and go over it. If it's not fruitful, then we'll put it aside and just go with the new money. So I just want to make sure y'all are aware of that. If you go to the next page, page two, we provided two, two or three illustrations, one for a ten-year note and one for a twelve, fifteen years. So if you look at this one right now on this ten-year, and we ran it at six percent, we don't think that would be the number, but we're just trying to be conservative and under, under promise. But as it is, based on that running, we, we would anticipate a debt service around one-point-three-six million over ten years. If you notice that, that's in that column D in the, in the green. So with that, that keeps the tax rate for the I N S is currently at seven-point-five-seven. That's the column second from the right on the very far right end. That would keep you from increasing the tax rate, that would keep it level. I would note that in the I N S fund, there is a, there is a balance as of twenty-twenty-three of about a million-three. It would require us to grab about three-hundred-thousand of that, and that money can only be used towards paying debt service, it can't go to maintenance or operations or anything like that. So we would put that in there to mitigate any I N S rate increase. However, this is on the ten-year, so to give you guys a little more flexibility, our recommendation, and I, and I think staff would, would, would.
Correct.
Would be there as well, is if we did the fifteen-year, it would probably be more in the range of a million, million forty-one in debt service. So that's about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar difference annually to give you guys some flexibility. And if you notice, that contribution is no longer needed in that column to hit the tax rate we need. And then if you go to the last page, that has the refunding there in the red on page four. Again, not a whole lot of savings that we ran the other day, about maybe fifty-six-thousand. This would be used for structure, for, to give you guys capacity. Again, interest rates have been just the world, you know, trade tariffs, those kind of things are kind of throwing these things a little bit out of whack. So again, like I said, we'll monitor it, but no promises that the refunding would work or we would, or we would bring it back. So with that, I guess if there's any questions?
I have a question. Do we have a necessity, we need to do ten, probably in the bottom of the two or three years, we're probably going to need to do another ten, do you think, based upon what our debt is and what we're paying, that we'll be able to do that without raising taxes?
I, I believe so. If, if you notice in the years going out to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, your debt service is probably going down, probably in the range of a million dollars annually. So it wouldn't, I don't even necessarily think you'd have to wait that long. It may be if you needed it like pretty immediately, like next year or the year thereafter, we probably would do some structuring where we would say, we would push some principal out a year or so just to give you that space, but it's about managing the balance there. But again, you know, if you go back to the first page, I mean, you've seen the growth of the city over ten years, roughly about eighty percent growth, that's averaging eight percent or so. You never know if it'll continue at that pace, but.
So the next two years, three of the most would have the, what's the situation of the ten, to continue to do projects and match grants?
Yes, sir. And then again, if you go to the last page, page five, you know, by law, we have to do this notice of intent to publish in the paper twice, and the, the time has to, you have to let forty-five days go before we issue. So that means that we would come back on June ninth to price it and present the bids to you. Again, this would be a private placement, not an open market. We would go to, we would have a term sheet that goes out to about forty to fifty banks in the state to see what their bids would look like, and we would be working with staff to provide whatever documents they need. That's all I got.
We're recommending the fifteen-year and get quotes on, do some refinancing. If the interest rates drop, y'all have been watching the market, it's up today and down tomorrow. And so if we happen to hit the market well, then we'll take a look at refinancing. If not, then we just stick with what we have.
Yes, sir.
And then borrow the ten million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve resolution number nineteen-eighty-one, authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation series twenty-twenty-five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item, item number fifty-nine is unfinished business. This is, this item is a tabled item, so I need a motion to remove from the table?
I'm going to, to remove the item from the table.
Second. And there's a motion and a second to remove the item of a conditional use permit for the sale of onsite consumption at eight-one-five North Francisco. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, Mayor, this was tabled because we didn't have the police report, so I don't know if that came in or.
Okay, I think, Chief, do you have any comments on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chief Torres. We were not able to get the stats. We went through records, to communications, and we even called Tyler Technologies, and as a result of the system being down, we weren't able to get stats. However, I did talk to the chiefs and patrol, and it doesn't appear that we have any problems at that location.
Okay. All right, are there any questions? Any questions for Chief? Or staff? Mr. Cervantes, you want to go over the, the requirements?
So it's a life, life of use and T A B C license with the understanding that the permit can be revoked, C U P not transferable to others, waiver of the three-hundred-foot separation requirement from residential areas, restripe the parking area and add landscaping, must comply with all city codes with the different departments, must acquire a business, business license prior to occupancy, hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from ten a.m. to twelve a.m., and then Sundays from twelve p.m. to twelve a.m., and then must, must be in compliance with the noise ordinance at all times.
Mayor, I have a couple of legal questions. I'm wondering if we can take this into executive session, please.
Sure. Are there any other questions before we go into executive session? No? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
She's making, I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
The, the, the chief of police came up and said he hasn't had any complaints, whatever.
And then one of the city council people just said, "We think we need to take this into an executive session," and they all just left the room. Shit, thanks. Yeah, we're watching it right now. Woo. Some lady over here, a Mexican lady in the corner, said, "I think we need to take this to executive session," and everybody got up and went in the back.
How much to reconvene, Mayor?
There's a motion and a second. Can I have a second?
Second.
And a second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who say no, motion carries. Okay. All right. Item number 55. The consideration and possible action adopting resolution. Well, it was a question mark because we didn't have it yet. Okay. In response to the petition submitted by the Mission Police Association Local 293. Is there a motion?
Do you want Patricia?
I was gonna, I was recommending a motion to table to allow additional time to review the legal requirements.
Okay. I'd like to make that motion. All right, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second to table the item subject to further legal review. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. And item number 59 was a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at 815 North Francisco Avenue.
Mayor, I'd like to make a formal motion of approval with an exception that all music conducted only to be indoors.
Second. All right. There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit subject to the, to having music only indoors and no music allowed outdoors.
Would you like to add for the conditions?
Yes. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
That would be ordinance 5626.
56?
26.
26. Okay. Thank you. So the next item is routine matters. Mr. Perez, do you have any comments?
Sure do. We have Boys and Girls Club and the Spears Library are jointly hosting a 10 Gold, Teens Golden Hunt, Egg Hunt on Wednesday, April 17th at 6:00 PM at the Boys and Girls Club. Autism Awareness Walk Saturday, April 19th at 10:00 AM at the All Inclusive Lions Park. Spring Community Roundup, April 26th at 8:00 AM to 12:00, 1400 South Conway. The Earth Day 5K, April 26th at 7:30 AM to 9:30 at Benson Palm Community Park. And Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, April 30th at 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Spears Memorial Library. And the city office will be closed on Friday, April 18th in the service of Good Friday. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. City Council comment? Anyone? Jess?
Only because we're not going to have a meeting, I don't think, before then. I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter and I hope that everybody has a great time with their family and friends.
That's right.
And make sure you hug somebody and tell them how much you love them because you just never know how somebody has been feeling. And so I just want to wish everyone well.
No comments.
Okay.
I do want to, we had the trash, again, happy Easter, I hope everyone. Thank you Jess for bringing that up. That everyone enjoys their Easter with their families. But the community engagement that I've seen with the Trash Bash was, was really fantastic this past weekend. And I encourage everyone to come out to the autism walk because with that awareness brings acceptance, brings inclusion, brings everything. So the more we participate, the more we engage, I just, I encourage everyone to come. So, thank you.
Happy Easter and I also want to invite everybody to go to the autism awareness.
I do have one more. Ms. Patricia Ramon, could you please come up? I want to introduce you to the City Council. This is, she's our newest addition to the City of Mission and Patricia is going to be our Government Affairs Officer and Director of Government Affairs. And will be working with the mayor and all the council members who are doing a lot of work in Austin, in Washington lately, and all the different agencies, and also in Mexico. And so we welcome her onboard. Today's her first day, she just finished orientation, so she'll be in the office tomorrow and she'll be office where the auditor's office used to be and that's where she'll be located. So I just wanted everybody to meet you and you'll be meeting with each of them individually in the coming week. So welcome onboard.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Judith, it's her first meeting.
Oh, Judith. She's already been here for two weeks.
She's been here a week, so he thinks she's already like a lifer.
She's in old hat. And Judith is our Deputy Director of PIO and she's hit the ground running and she's already figured out that our equipment that we have to, that's why we've had problems, it died. And it just died right when she came in, which is perfect because now she's working on getting us.
New stuff.
Replacement.
There you go.
So we're real happy to have her onboard.
Okay. That's, that's it. Any motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
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 Thank you, Mayor.